Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Dana Point City Council meeting for July the first. If you'll all please rise. The pledge today will be led by Councilmember Bill Bro and the invocation will be provided by Pastor Jens Christie.
If you place your hand over your heart, please remember our men and women serving our country overseas. And repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You know, we've been a praying nation from the time we put it together. I'm sure the Indians prayed before us. But we pray for our meals. We pray for our president when he's inaugurated. We pray when we're happy. We pray when we're sad. And we're going to pray tonight and include a thanks for the freedom that we are going to celebrate shortly. Would you bow your heads, please? Lord God of the nations, by your grace and in your patience, you have allowed this, our land, once again to celebrate its birth. It's been a guest for liberty and justice and equity, and we are grateful. In your hands are all the people of this world, the prideful, the needy, the arrogant, the lost, the entitled, the dispossessed, the loved and the unloved. And we, even we too, seek your aid and comfort in these tumultuous times. Grant that the blessings of freedom, which were purchased at tremendous cost and which we prize so highly, may always be coordinated with a spirit of self-discipline. Come to the aid of nations and leaders who need your guidance. We pray that we would be guided by good and wise leaders who have a hunger for righteousness and justice. May we be people of humility, generosity, and compassion. May we clearly declare our intention to work for the time when all people, regardless of race, religion, or sex, will be granted equal dignity and worth. Make us mindful of the sacrifices of our military and their families, and we salute them for giving us the opportunity to fulfill our God-given rights. We pray that you will cause their needs to be met now and in the future. God of all who are in need, send peace in our time, peace for our hearts, peace for our land, and peace for the world. As we commemorate our national independence, accept again our declaration of our everlasting dependence upon you, and all our joy and thanksgiving enable us to remain a nation under God, and give us grace, mercy, and goodness to minister to mankind in his name. Amen.
Please be seated. City Attorney Munoz, do we have a need to report anything out of our closed session?
We have no reportable items from our closed session this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to presentations and proclamations. We'll start with our Business of the Month, Doheny Village Car Wash.
Members of the council, tonight I'm pleased to announce the Business of the Month for July 2014, Doheny Village Car Wash. We are joined this evening by its owner, John Suber, and a couple members of his staff. Doheny Village Car Wash is located on Doheny Park Road and was open in 1996. Jim's father always wanted to open a car wash and purchased the building shortly after it was built. Upon its purchase, Jim moved back from Oregon to help his father run the business. Doheny Village Car Wash is a full-service car wash, offering 100% hand car washing, also a full-service gas service station. It also includes complete auto detailing, windshield chip repair, headlight restoration, free Wi-Fi, automotive accessories, and more. They pride themselves on using the finest automotive products in their washing and waxing services. Their products are also low impact on the environment, and they have a recycling system that recycles their used wastewater. Their staff strives to provide the highest quality customer service, and over half their staff has worked there for over 10 years, and they know their customers by name. Oftentimes, when a customer arrives in their car, they know the vehicle and they have their service ticket written before they even step foot out of their car. In addition to this excellent customer service, they provide excellent service to the community. They have been longtime supporters of the Boys and Girls Club and also work actively to help fundraise for our local schools and their activities. On behalf of the city council, I would like to congratulate Doheny Village Car Wash for being selected as Business of the Month for July 2014. We wish you many years of continued success and prosperity.
It's an excellent presentation by Robert Sedita, our management analyst. Well, Doheny Village Car Wash is one of those great businesses that's been a long time in Dana Point, in the Capistrano Beach area. And, you know, I've been there. I know our city vehicles, I think, are washed there. And it's down the street from the Costco, which should have been part of Capistrano Beach, which is now part of San Juan Capistrano, just before the city incorporated. San Juan redrew the dotted lines. Well, Costco has a car wash, but we want to keep all that business, of course, in Dana Point. So we appreciate you going to our Doheny Village Car Wash. It's a wonderful community partner. They do a lot of great things for our community, and we appreciate their business and hope they have many, many more years in the city of Dana Point. So if you could come forward for the presentation? Where are they? Okay. Okay. We have a wonderful certificate of recognition for you. Doheny Village Hand Car Wash, Featured Business of the Month for July 2014. The city of Dana Point takes great pleasure in featuring Doheny Village Car Wash, located at 34241 Doheny Park Road in Capistrano Beach, and extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month by Mayor Lisa Bartlett on behalf of the Dana Point City Council in the city of Dana Point. Congratulations and many more years of success in your location.
Very much, ma'am. Okay. I just want to say thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's great to be recognized. We've been in Capo Beach for quite a few years. Most of the staff, like you said, has been there for a long time. Our general manager has been there for 15 years, I think. It's a great city. It's a great part of town. You can't beat it. You can throw a rock and hit the ocean. What better place to go to work every day? I mean, we love it. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call up Heather Johnston, our CEO of our Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, for a presentation.
Well, I've had the pleasure of getting to know you, and we've been helping with Doheny Village. And I just want to say that congratulations on Business of the Month, and we'd like to offer you a free membership for the Dana Point Chamber and get you back in our chamber. So congratulations. Thanks for being a great business, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and we have some photos. I'm sorry to pull them down. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to our July Employee of the Month, which is Kirth Nelson. At this time, I'd like to have our Director of Community Development, Ursula Luna Reynosa, come forward, please. If you could say a few words about Kirth.
Thank you, Mayor Bartlett. I really appreciate you honoring Kirth Nelson. The word that comes to mind is workhorse and very detail-oriented. He has been a huge critical factor, particularly recently, as we've become very busy, in helping us move some of our projects along. And in this past month, he's worked on the former McCarr site, the former mobile home site, moving that along. It's currently in administrative draft EIR process, working on the Ritz-Carlton item that came before you recently as an appeal, and also the Harbor CDP, which was a major undertaking. He was doing all of those at the same time while on vacation, emailing back and forth, probably much to his wife's chagrin. But he was very dedicated and is a huge asset to the city of Dana Point, and I am thankful that I have the opportunity to thank him publicly in this manner for all of his hard work, and it's been very helpful to the city.
Kirth, I just want to echo the remarks from Ursula. You've just been a great part of the city, and I can tell you that the institutional knowledge that you have, whenever we have a really difficult planning question, the question always comes up, and we say, well, who should we call? Let's ask Kirth, because you always have the answers. You've been a great employee at the city, and we hope you're here for many, many more years. So come on up. We've got a presentation for you. We'll now present the Certificate of Recognition to Kirth Nelson, Employee of the Month, July 2014. Whereas Kirth Nelson was hired by the city of Dana Point, December 4th, 2007, as a senior planner in the Community Development Department, and whereas Kirth's professionalism, dedication, insightfulness, and attention to detail are attributes that benefit the city of Dana Point as he fulfills his role as senior planner. I won't go through all the things that you've covered, but down at the end here, your willingness to focus on solutions, as evidenced by the many appreciative comments received from customers, exemplifies the city's commitment to providing five-star service. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Dana Point and the Dana Point City Council, I, Mayor Lisa Bartlett, hereby congratulate Kirth Nelson upon his selection as the city of Dana Point Employee of the Month for July 2014, and express heartfelt appreciation for his devoted service to the citizens of Dana Point, and express our sincere thanks for his exemplary service to our community. Thank you so much for your great work.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just want to say thank you very much for this honor. I really appreciate it, and appreciate the support that the council showed, not only staff generally, but our department recently. We've been very busy, as Ursula has expressed, and really appreciate the support we received. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could have your family come up? Wonderful. Can you introduce your family?
Oh, yes. Okay, I'll start first with my wife, Julie, and then I have the youngest one in front, that's Kellen, and then Connor to his right, and then Kyla, and then my oldest, Kirth IV. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have some photos. Can I squeeze in? Good. Thank you. Excuse me, sweetie. Excuse me. Thanks. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by the staff?
Not this evening, Madam Mayor.
By the public?
Item number 11. Thank you.
Item 11, okay. And by council? No? Okay. Do we have a motion then for the balance?
Move the balance.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Actually, we'll have to do roll call voting, if you don't mind.
Oh, roll call voting. Oh, that's why they're turned out. Okay.
I'll go ahead and start that for you. Councilmember Bro. Councilmember Alvera.
Aye.
Councilmember Schoffel.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Weinberg.
Aye.
Mayor Bartlett.
Aye.
Five-zero, that passes.
All right, and that passes. And now we'll move on to item number 11, which is the installation of three bocce ball courts at Lantern Bay Park. Could we have a staff report, please?
Of course, Mayor Bartlett. What you have before you this evening is a recommendation that staff be authorized to install three bocce ball courts at Lantern Bay Park. As the council is aware, that the basketball court that used to exist there, there were some issues with the foundation, and we had to remove that. And we put in much-needed parking to help out with that park. We've been working closely with the Marriott Resort since the city has taken over that park, probably about within the last six years, and feel based upon demand and the passive nature of that park over there, that a bocce ball court would be most appropriate as located in the staff report. What's also nice is the fact that we have some park development funds available to fund this, so it won't come out of general fund monies. And so what we'd like to do, after working with the staff and the general manager at the Marriott, as well as city staff, we'd like to recommend that the council move forward with this this evening. And Kevin Evans, Brian McClure, and I would be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Schoffel.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Shakib, what kind of outreach did the staff do to determine that this was an appropriate use for the area?
You know, and I'll defer to Kevin. Kevin, why don't you come on up? While you're coming up, what we did is we did a survey of what's available in other coastal communities, what goes on in that park, but also the passive nature of the park. We wanted to identify a use that would complement the passive nature, as well as work well with the hotel, and the hotel had indicated that a bocce ball court would be a nice feature to add as well. Kevin?
Yes, Councilmember Schoffel. As Mr. Shakib has indicated, we were looking at a passive use for the park. We checked with our local neighboring cities, and we found that Laguna Niguel has a bocce ball court, and it's very well-used, and it's not only by the public, but they also use it for events, tournaments, bocce ball tournaments that they hold at their facility. It's easily maintained. It's something that can be a joint use, not only by our residents and visitors to Dana Point, but in speaking with Mr. Samuels at the Marriott Hotel, he indicated that that's something, an activity that he can offer for his guests as well. So he would have equipment there that they could check out, and they could utilize that as part of their stay in the Marriott Hotel. So we were looking at a mixed use, not only for our residents, something that we could put an organized activity in there, hold leagues, weeknight leagues, that is very popular. And we could also bring in a bocce ball tournament as well, that would attract people here to Dana Point, possibly have them stay in our hotels. So we're really looking at a mixed use, but something that is truly an appropriate use for Lantern Bay Park.
Exactly. An emphasis on the passive nature that would complement the resort that's there. So with that, we'd be happy to respond to any other questions the council may have.
Okay, council members, any other questions? Okay, we do have several members of the public who have requested to speak. So I will be calling your name, if you could state your name and city of residence. Our first speaker is Jasmine Smith.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Smith, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I came here to speak out against the proposed bocce ball courts. Many of the items that the gentleman just said that would be beneficial in getting the community there and getting good use out of it, Laguna Niguel has one also, I think can also be used for a skate park. So I feel like the fact that this was just on the consent calendar and hasn't really been, had a lot of public commentary on it, is kind of distressing to me. I would like for us to be able to do something for our youth, and I think a skate park is a great way to do it. It builds community, builds character for the kids, and I just feel like a bocce ball court and $100,000 that you guys are proposing to spend on it probably isn't the best use of the money. Also, I've written a letter to the city council, and I've sent it out to all the members, as well as the city manager, and I haven't received one response. So I just feel like as a resident of Dana Point, that you guys are ignoring our requests and just aren't really hearing what we have to say.
If I could ask, when was that email sent? Because I don't recall receiving an email on a...
I don't either.
Okay. Well, I sent it, it was published in the Dana Point Times, and then I sent it the following week to all...
Can you resend it?
I absolutely can.
Okay. None of us remember.
Did you receive it, Kathy?
Not that I know of.
Because I called you specifically to ask for Doug's email address, if you recalled that.
Right, you gave him the individual.
Yeah. So maybe it went through to the spam folders or...
I don't know. Sorry, but if I would have gotten it, I would have responded.
Yeah. Well, a response would definitely be appreciated, because there's a large percentage of the community who's actually pushing for the skate park, and we just feel like we're being ignored. So to see this item on the bocce ball court, you know, who's actually going to use that a lot? Or what are we doing for our children? You know? We're doing Town Center, we're doing the Ritz expansion, we're doing so many things that are for adults. Bocce ball is for adults, for the people at the hotels who are out of town, or I just feel like for our families, we could definitely put a little bit more effort into that.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is, please, no clapping. Our next speaker is Dean Diakov.
Hi, I'm Dean Diakov from Dana Point, and I'm also speaking about, instead of spending the money on a bocce ball court, maybe first creating like a public poll for like, to see maybe what the people want. And I personally think we should make a skate park as well, because a skate park, one, it's like, I know way more people in my community that have more passion for skateboarding than a bocce ball. And the skateboarding, like, it creates a community. It doesn't take much money to upkeep it once you have it. You're bringing people from other cities to the towns, which brings business to like local skate shops and all those things. Also, maybe compared to like, all the parks and beaches we have, which people can already play bocce ball, we don't need a specific court, when all around Dana Point, it is technically illegal to skateboard. So maybe having a park would keep kids out of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gino, please, please. No clapping, thank you. Our next speaker is Gino Scolari.
Hi, I'm here also to support the concept of building a skate park. I'm actually a San Clemente resident, but I think it'd be a great thing, you know, to invest in a skate park in Dana Point. I've been skateboarding all the skate parks around here for 19 years, ever since I started. And I just want to say that skateboarding is always, you know, going to these skate parks, you know, skateboarding has always kept me out of trouble, and I don't know what I'd be doing if I wasn't a skateboarder, you know what I mean? And it's just a great place for the community to go to and have a good time and get together. So it's something to consider. The Dana Point Times posted an article on it, same topic. Thank you for hearing me, and it's something to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ty Smith.
Hi, my name's Ty Smith. I'm a 25-year resident of Dana Point. Thank you for taking the time. I'm also here to oppose the building of a bocce ball court. Not that I'm opposed to bocce at all. I actually really enjoy bocce. We play it at the beach, at the park. It's a great sport, but I don't think that the usage will be even used there. The numbers on skateboarding alone are amazing. There's over 14 million participants in the United States. If you broke that down just on a Dana Point level, that'd equal about 1,300 skateboarders in Dana Point. I would actually say that number's much higher, because this is the centric area for action sports. But when you do the numbers on the bocce ball court, we're looking at about $15 per square foot to build a bocce ball court, which I don't think is really going to get used, whereas a skateboard park is about $24 to $30 per square foot for building costs. But it's an actual outreach. It's something that our community will use. Currently, I go to the beach, I play bocce almost every time, but I don't really see many other people playing it. And as Jasmine stated, we have a bocce court in Laguna Niguel. I also see that three lanes is very difficult to have a tournament, to have any sort of real professional bocce game happen. I don't know. I don't know how a real bocce tournament works, but it doesn't seem like a really appropriate usage of our money here. There's over 5,000 parks in the United States. 97% of communities agree that the skate park benefited their community, and 85% of those communities would plan to build another skate park. If you go to the Costa Mesa Skate Park, it's full of people all the time. The basketball court's next to it, the baseball field's next to it, there's nobody on them. But those skate parks are so concentrated with people, it almost creates a dangerous environment. We could drive to San Clemente, we could drive to Laguna Niguel, which is actually $65 a year to use their skateboard park, if you're a non-resident, which doesn't seem right to me. And so as a long-paying tax resident of Dana Point, I can strongly oppose the bocce ball courts and can only say, let's open this up to public debate and really see what we need for the city, and I don't think the bocce ball court is one of those things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chet Johnson.
Hello, I'm Chet. Like you said, but I'm actually a resident of San Juan Capistrano, but I am in the Dana Point areas, and I'm also a skateboarder, as you might call it. The skateboarders around here, the ones that are skating, they do get hassled a lot. I've been hassled once or twice myself by the police cops, saying, no, you can't skate here. But then if that makes you think, then where can I skate? Because around here, there isn't really many public places for skateboarders to go and skate, and also, like, the skaters are also, they're just like looked down on by other people, like, oh, we don't want these kids in our streets, they're dangerous, and like, they can, like, they're, they could hurt us, and they're just not good, they're like, are doing bad things. So if, like, we were to get all the skaters, I think, and get a nice skate park for them to all go to, well, you would be like wiping off all the skaters, and then they'd just be doing their own thing in their own skate park, and it wouldn't be that hard for, like, police people to be regulating it and to be patrolling just around there for skaters, instead of having to hassle skaters all around, because they'd all be in the same place. And I love me some bocce ball, but when I do want to play, like, I just go in my backyard and play. I don't, I don't have a car or a license to go and drive to play bocce ball with a few other kids. And, well, no, because kids don't really play bocce ball. But there are people that are going to be driving their cars, like skateboarder kids, like, you can't get in your car for young skaters and drive to go and play bocce ball. For skating, kids can go and skate to the skate park, because they would like to, and thank you, I guess. Skating rules.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ryan Lee.
Hi, my name is Ryan Lee. I'm born and raised here in Dana Point. I didn't prepare any sort of remarks. I just recently heard about the proposed bocce ball lanes, and it caught my attention because I thoroughly enjoy bocce ball. I'm a bocce ball enthusiast. But we have been, I'm a parent, and as a lot of these people have spoken, our parents as well, we've been trying to get some feedback and results on proposing a skate park. And we can play bocce ball, and we do. I played Thai all the time, and, you know, it's a lot of fun, and it's a great way to maybe bring people in. But the fact remains is that we've got a lot of kids who came up here today, too, that it means something to us to have the funds taken a look at and really give it some serious thought, you know? What are we doing with the money here? I personally have spoken with the city about having a skate park for over 10 years. I remember going down to, down by Del Abispo and having a meeting with the representative. He said the city didn't have the funds, that you guys were busy working on Sea Terrace Park. Now we got Sea Terrace Park. Sea Terrace Park's a great place to play bocce ball. I go play bocce ball over there all the time. I live right there. But we don't have anywhere we can skateboard. We can't even cruise, you know, like do cruising skateboarding. So we've got to rethink the way we look at the use of our funds, how we can maybe do something that's going to benefit more people, not... something that's going to benefit more people, not just a select group, but a larger group in our community. And that might also involve rethinking the rules about skateboarding in general because there's certain types of skateboarding, there's trick skateboarding and there's cruising skateboarding, you know, people ride bikes around here to get around for transportation and, you know, skateboards are a method of transportation too. So, you know, I didn't see a lot of eye contact from you guys, but the ones who did, I appreciate it, it's nice to see you and I hope you give it some thought. We'd like to have a vote on it. I think the money could be used better, so.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Glenn Brumage.
Well, I'm Glenn Brumage from Dana Point Capistrano Beach and I've lived here for over 50 years. Having been a skateboarder here from the very beginning and bombing Selva and La Cresta, where we really shouldn't have and where we don't want our kids doing that today, I think you guys should consider how you really go forward with this. Now, the other thing I did a minute ago was I looked up the, a Dana Point Marriott and actually what I found was a Laguna Cliffs Marriott, must be in Laguna Beach, right? So, I'm not sure about actually building them a bocce court. Second thing is, is I would say, go down to San Clemente, look at their bocce courts at any time of the day, a weekend, whenever you'd like. They have bocce courts down in South San Clemente. Nobody on them, but go to the skate park at Steed Park and it's full. And that's where we want our kids skateboarding. We want them skating someplace safe, we want them to be able to learn from each other, we want them to react and to, you know, be a group together rather than being out and skating on parking blocks. And the last thing I'll say is, is the DNA of Dana Point is Hobie Alter. It's skateboarding and it's surfing. I'm sorry, it's not bocce.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Gilbert.
I didn't go, come here with any planned speech either, but basically there's Dana Points, I mean skate parks all over and Oceanside, just down the road, they opened up a third one. They have one in Missionville, San Clemente, Laguna Hills, Laguna Niguel. They have Atnies Park, which is in Lake Forest, which is super big. And basically, here's a copy of an article that was, I think, March 28th through April 3rd, Dana Point Times. Could I hand them out to everybody?
Just give them to you and hand them out to everybody? Is that numbered anymore?
Basically, I was just here for, you know, to try to get a better skate park. I mean, get a skateboard park, period. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that concludes our public comments on this item. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation and a vote. Who'd like to begin? Okay. City manager, do you have any additional information you'd like to provide?
No, just that, you know, we, as I mentioned before, when I came here, one of the things that the council clued in is, and the last that I was in, I had been part of the effort to build a skate park. And when we looked, the problem we have is we're six and a half square miles of built-out community. And obviously, the big issue you face in any time you try and construct a skate park is nimbyism, not in my backyard, especially when you look at our residential parks and the passive nature of our parks. One of the things that we focused on early on when I was here is if you really took a look for an optimal location for a skateboard park. And it really resonates with me every time I go to Santa Barbara and I take a look at the location of Santa Barbara Skate Park, right down on the beach or adjacent to the beach. And we'd begun a discussion with the folks at Doheny State Beach in an area over by North Creek, tucking one back in there where you'd have access to a parking lot. You have a very active use down there with the surfing and the beach going and a close proximity to public parking, public transportation routes. We thought that would be the optimal location. But unfortunately, State Parks was of the mind that it would require an amendment to their general park plan and that they weren't prepared to do that at this time, or at that time. And so I think, I still think, after having lived in Dana Point over 12 years, that the optimal location to build a skate park is down at Doheny State Beach. And we had even talked about at the time possibly joint funding one down there if they would make the land available. And I still think if I'm asked, and I think I am being asked, is that that's where, you know, I think you should encourage your state elected officials and State Parks to consider addressing the general plan for Doheny State Beach, to see about constructing or getting and having the state work with us in a joint development plan for a skate park down at Doheny State Beach. It just lends itself very well, especially when you look at the topography down there and its proximity to the water and to the beach. So that's the only thing I'd like to add at this time, but I'll be happy to respond to any other questions the council may have.
Okay, I know it's really challenging. The footprint for a skateboard park is pretty large and you've got to have adequate parking as well. I drove by the skateboard park in Laguna Niguel and I think when you put those into a city, you don't want them too close to hotels or to residential areas. And then you've got to have the parking element connected with the skateboard park. So it's challenging within our city limits, but, you know, I think you're right, city manager, looking at Doheny State Beach, if we could possibly craft, you know, a solution down there sometime in the future, that would really be the ideal location. So let's see if that's something that we can look into in the future. And I think the cost is something, sharing would be great because I think the minimum price for a skateboard park is something like $500,000. It's pretty expensive.
And I think would be helpful is if the people who approach the council would approach State Parks with the same vigor and get a dialogue going and will be happy to join in the dialogue and let Superintendent Rich Hayden know that, you know, there might be some discussion for it. But again, I think that's the optimal location. The other thing too about a skate park that's really important is having in a close proximity to public transportation, so the folks can get off a bus to enjoy the amenity, but then also get back on the bus to get home safely. Because sometimes they do come from distances. So again, if the council were to direct, I'd be happy to, you know, approach Rich Hayden down at State Parks and, you know, I'd be happy to let Assembly Member Diane Harkey make sure she's aware of the concern here and the need for State Parks to take a look at this and possibly amending its general plan to accommodate a skate park.
Okay, and there's a bus stop right there by the bridge, so.
Oh, yeah.
The ideal location as well. Okay?
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Okay, yeah, we're not taking any more public comment at this time. Okay, council members, any additional questions, comments? Yeah, Councilmember Schoeffel.
Yeah. Here's something I think would be helpful, Mr. Schachkevich. First of all, for a, sort of a, one strategy, I think the one you suggest is a good one. It sounds like a sound one. But what I would like to see, what I think, what I would hope all of the council members would like to see, and I'm certain that the residents would like to see and the folks who are speaking up this evening and the folks who are writing emails and letters to me. What I think would be helpful would be a short but complete white paper on what's involved with acquiring, constructing, maintaining safely a skate park of the quality that we would expect in a city like Dana Point, which would be, you know, consistent with the other things we build here and the other things we maintain here. I think the issue is actually considerably more complicated than most people, including myself, realize. And I've never seen that all summed up in one place. I've never seen an inventory of our, you know, park spaces. I've never seen an analysis of our current budget, a comparison to other cities who successfully operate similar things. And I would put in there one of the options being the joint use project with the State Park is one of those options. I think if we could get that on the table and we could disseminate to all the interested folks, then we would have more of a factual, real basis for possibly discussing the item in the future. I say this because I know from the many years I served on the planning commission, the 34 years I've lived in the city, have been through this issue a number of times. And when it wasn't this issue, it was another issue like this that had very similar, you know, features to it. If we could collate all of that information in one place so that we would have the material to evaluate, digest, and then, you know, possibly make a policy decision on, I think that would be really helpful. I would urge my fellow council members to join me in giving the staff that direction.
If I could possibly respond, if it was the council's pleasure, what I could do is I've asked Robert Sedida to start pulling together information, but I'd like to also, if the council were to go down this road, I'd engage Matt Sinekory as a part of that team and I know he's very busy with the town center. But one of the important things about having a city engineer involved is the fact that a skateboard park is basically a concrete mass of the equivalent of a swimming pool without the water. And one of the issues that we had at Villa Canone was the underlying geology that would support such a mass. And the fact that Villa Canone was an ancient landslide and is on a coastal bluff, that was part of the problem, being able to economically tie that back and secure that into the bluff face. So that's why essentially the geography or the geology didn't support it there. Having said that, if you look at Dana Point and our topography, part of the very big issue we have is the underlying geology in our parks to support such a mass. And that's why when we go back to Doheny State Beach is the fact that you're basically at sea level and there's not much of a differentiation as far as slope. So what I'd like to do is if the council so directs is have Robert work with Matt as well as Kevin Evans and Brian McClure to pull together the material that we've done and put together a summary and a staff report that we could bring back at a future council meeting for the council to, you know, take a look at. But again, it's going to be an evolution because I'm sure as the word gets out, you know, Sea Terrace Park, you're going to have the folks from Niguel Shores, you know, possibly say, wait a minute, you promised us a passive park there. And so having said that, I think if we could start pulling together a staff report that we could bring back, get some council direction, refine it a little bit further and, but that's what I would recommend to the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bro.
Thanks, Mayor Bartlet. I just want to talk to the skateboard folks for a second. Don't think that because you come and talk, that we don't hear what you're saying. You're not the only folks that want the city to do something. The Historical Society wants us to build a museum. The Surfing Heritage people want us to build a museum. The seniors want their own senior center. The Bridge Club wants us to build a building for them to play bridge with their 200 members. So just understand, we hear all of these things, just don't think that we're not listening or acting on it. Second thing, both my kids skateboard. Yesterday, I was at Volcom, Saturday, I was at San Clemente. I spend more time than, I'm a baseball, football, basketball guy and for me to sit at a skate park is a little difficult. But both my kids skate. One of the things I've seen, they've been to Element, there's a big growing indoor skate park movement. I know my son was in a school down in Vista, right down in a strip mall, there was indoor bowls and ramps and a private company managed that. I think there's a lot more options out there for the skateboard community, especially with the Volcoms and the Atnies and DC Shoes and all these companies that are in skateboarding. So I would say, don't look at the city of Dana Point as the only source to get a skate park done.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any additional questions, comments? No? Okay.
I'll basically move the item.
Yes, Councilmember Schoeffel.
Okay, so the, you moved the recommended action, Mr. Weinberg?
I'll move the recommended action, but I will actually add your suggestion, which I think was a good one, that we can, you know, we always talk about numbers and everybody can talk numbers. It's when you have to put pen to paper and look at the numbers and make sure they're right, that sometimes you're surprised. And, you know, so I would modify the motion to, you know, move the recommended action plus to have staff start looking at options of doing a skateboard park in Dana Point, what the theoretical cost would be to both build and maintain. And probably more than that is where we would put the thing, which is probably the biggest challenge we have. As somebody mentioned, we're only six plus square miles, fairly well built out and the big vacant parcels that are in this town are not owned or controlled by the city, which makes it a little more difficult because everybody can always talk about the water district property or the bus property, but we don't control either one of them. It's owned by different entities and we can always say, why don't we build it there? But it's awful hard to build where you don't have control or own it, so.
I think I'd also like to add to the motion, the amended motion, that we'll probably do for another community survey in the near future, that that question regarding a skateboard park be a specific question in our next community survey. Councilmember Alvera?
Yes, I agree with all the discussion. We've done this before with the Surfing Heritage Museum, doing a feasibility study and picking all the sites and doing the pros and cons on it. And then it went to a lot of public hearings in the community and we got feedback as far as where to put it and where not to put it. So I completely support this idea of documenting it, like Councilman Schoeffel says, as a white paper to see what the alternatives are.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, and just to clarify, what we're going to do is basically take a lot of the materials, we're not reinventing the wheel, and what I'll probably end up doing is contracting with RJM to do a little bit of a time and material study because I believe RJM was the local firm we used to do a lot of the work. So, you know, we'll bring something back and rehash and provide a jumping off point for the council to have a discussion. But remember, it's going to be difficult because what drives the cost is the location and the site with the underlying topography and geology.
All the more important, Mr. Schachkevich, that we reduce that to a cogent analysis, that not only us on the council, but everybody in this audience, everybody is concerned about this issue, all the stakeholders can, you know, can view it in a comprehensible way.
Understand, and my only comment was, we're not going to come back with a report and solve the question, you know, solve the problem. What we're going to do is come back and to begin the discussion because it's an evolution because, you know, it's just not feasible for me and the staff to go in and do an analysis at every site because you have to take a look at the amenities, the type of construction, the type of elements you want to include in it. So what we're going to do is we're going to take what we've discussed as the staff and as the community in the past, bring it forward as a jumping off point to get a little bit more direction because there are a lot of moving pieces to this that we have to start pulling together.
So I would second Mr. Weinberg's motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just add that, you know, when you do the white paper, that you do a theoretic, you know, maybe three theoretical footprints that include a skateboard park of A, B, and C, whatever that means, and the appropriate parking for that.
I just have to, we're building a town center right now. And, you know, it's, I want to bring something back that we can have a discussion and get further direction because, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of money to do this. So let me bring back what we've talked about in summary fashion and get a little bit more direction.
Fair enough.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. If we could have a vote, please, roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Bro? Councilmember Alvera?
Aye.
Councilmember Schoeffel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Bartlet?
Aye.
Five oh, that passes, thank you.
That passes, five zero. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles of the ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one second reading and adoption and it's item number eight. It's a second reading and adoption of an ordinance modification for the city council of the city of Dana Point, California, amending section 13.04.050, care of the natural resources, parks and recreational facilities, regulations of the municipal code in the headlands, natural open space, environmentally sensitive habitat park areas. Thank you.
Okay. Now, when we move on to public comments, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts that you may have. We have two requests to speak. The first is Susan Osborne. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Susan Osborne. I live in Laguna Beach. I have a business in Dana Point. It's called Coastal Arcadian, in which we have the Shed, which is a fine art gallery, contemporary. I have OC Beads, and I have the Coop, which is a mercantile store. And I am in the middle of the Majestic Housing project. My concern tonight is I'm asking for an extension of your viewing of your approval of the plan that's coming out of the city. I talked to Sima today. She's almost done with the plans that will get approved within the concept of the town center concept, the heights and all that. However, my customers who live in Dana Point really are not aware of this development, what it looks like. When Sima gets done, it's going to be handed over to the council, perhaps next on the 11th, and it goes on the calendar, the 14th, Monday, giving the residents no time to see this approved plan. And I think it's paramount. I think it's important for the residents to see what's happening. This is a big project. This is not just one building. This is a massive three-story project. And I'm just asking you to give the residents, again, time to see what the town has approved from Majestic. The stakes are going up next week, and they are only up for 24 hours. They don't go up all at one time. Each site goes up for one 24-hour day. There's three sites involved. So if you miss it for one day, you miss one site. It's, number one, it's confusing. You drive by, one day you have stakes of 40 feet high, the next day they're down and they're in another position. And how are the residents supposed to understand this? The only time they're going to be able to see this plan is the night that it could be voted in. And that doesn't seem fair to me. So I'm just being a spokesman for my customers who live here. And I'm urging the council to give us at least two or three weeks that they'll have a time to take a look at these plans when they get out of the planning department.
Mayor Bartlet, if I could just appoint a clarification on this. It'll be at least two months and then some before it's before the city council would. And I'm going to ask Ursula to provide just a general timeline here. But what Ms. Osborne's referring to as going before the Planning Commission is just the start of the review process. And there's going to be plenty of time for public comment at the Planning Commission level before this even is available to get to the council. Ursula, why don't you just give a quick overview?
Well, it has been noticed to go to the Planning Commission for July 14th. So that is coming up. That will be a public hearing. All of the legal noticing requirements have been met. So residents within a 500-foot radius, as well as the legal notice in the newspaper. That is the public hearing for the Planning Commission to consider the project. And it won't necessarily go to the city council unless it is appealed.
But I would anticipate from the comments that there's probably a good chance. But again, this is the first bite at the apple that the Planning Commission's going to have. And they're going to have questions, especially of a project of this mass that, you know... So again, I think I would suggest that you and your customers participate at the Planning Commission level. And then let's see how the Planning Commission deals with it. And then if need be, one of your recourse is if you don't agree with it, is to appeal it to the city council. And then you'll have an opportunity to come before the city council and make your case as to what your issues are on the development. And so, again, this is not an all or nothing at the next city council meeting because it...
I think it was an all or nothing, wasn't it, that you were telling me? Once it goes on the 14th, if it's approved, it's a go-ahead.
So our code indicates that the Planning Commission is the decision-making body on these types of discretionary permits unless the decision is appealed to the city council. So under appeal, the city council would hear it and be the final decision-making body.
But versus then having to go through that process for appeal, can it be open to the public before it gets to that stage?
No, the public hearing process is a notice public hearing at the Planning Commission at the date it's been noticed. And so that's the jumping off point. And so like a lot of projects, I would encourage you and your residents, all interested parties, to participate.
But this is a week, that's all. I'm asking for that to be extended, the time, before it gets to be...
It's noticed, I believe, 10 days in advance, is that correct?
The notice has gone out, correct?
Yeah, so it's been out there as legally mandated by law. And so I would suggest you come and participate. And then if you... And again, if you don't agree with what the Planning Commission does, again, I don't know what the planning... I can't predetermine what the Planning Commission's going to do. I haven't even seen the report yet. And I, you know, so again, we have to let the planning... There's a due process element for the property owner as well as people such as yourself. And we have to follow that due process. And so I would encourage you to participate then. And then if you agree or disagree with what the Planning Commission does, whatever that may be, you have a recourse. And ultimately, if you don't agree with the Planning Commission, there's a means by which you can get that heard before the city council. And you'll be able to come forward and state your case to this council. And so again, there's a process that needs to be followed.
Well, maybe I'm getting my council's confused, perhaps. I'm not sure. I mean, there's a 500-foot radius where they mail out notices. But where I'm at, no one on the east side of PCH is going to get notified because it's all commercial. None of the residents will be notified.
Again, it's also noticed in the local publications too, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so again, there's a mail-out, there's a noticing in the local publications. And so again, the fact, I would encourage you to participate. And if you don't agree with what the Planning Commission does, you have a recourse to have... You can be the appellant and appeal it to this city council and then make your case as to why you agree or disagree with whatever the Planning Commission has done. So again, participate in the process and the process set up to allow both you and ability to participate, but also the property owner to move forward in the development process.
Understood. All right. I just... It's just that no one, not one single customer of mine is aware of this development. They understand the redirection of the roadwork and all that development. They have not a clue. So that's... It's shocking to me.
Has the property been posted to?
Yes.
It's an eight-by-10. It's a sign like this, setback.
I understand.
It's not noticeable. So, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And our final speaker at public comments tonight is Alan Wickstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, my name is Alan Wickstrom, resident of Dana Point for 28 years, business owner 19 years. Today is my first day as past president of the Monarch Beach Sunrise Rotary Club. It's a wonderful day of freedom. It was a wonderful year. And I want to thank the mayor and the council for your kind proclamation recognizing our efforts in the past year. Our club won three Rotary District Awards. First place for large club and community service, first place in club service, and second place for vocational service. And we raised quite a bit of money and donated to local charities and volunteered hundreds of hours. And it was an amazing year as Rotary president, and I really enjoyed the honor of doing it. And I brought you our farewell newsletter so that you guys can cruise them at your leisure. They're also on our website at monarchbeachrotary.com. Coming up, August 16th, down at Doheny State Beach, home of the future skateboard park, is the Dana Point Lobster Beach Fest. And Dana Point Lobster Beach Fest, hopefully we get that on TV. Please go to danapointlobsterfest.org. Tickets are on sale now. We anticipate about 700 people to attend. And we have two live bands this year. So last year we had one. One wasn't enough. They got tired and went home. So we decided to go for two. And I want to thank our restaurant sponsors, Brio, Chef Louis Leppe, Donabees, Luciana's, Lux, Ricardo's Place, Stillwater, Surfing Cowboy, and Coffee Importers for being our restaurant sponsors. We're going to have great food available right when you walk in the door at 4:00. And of course, the wonderful lobster and steak dinner at the end. Our media sponsors are Cox Communications, Dana Point Times, San Clemente Times, Capistrano Dispatch. And it is truly a very fun event. Five years we've been doing this. This will be our fifth year. And it is our largest fundraiser for our club. And 100% of the money will go to charities, of which our two primary charities this year are Make-A-Wish Orange County Inland Empire and Boys and Girls Club Capistrano Valley. Next, tomorrow is... This is not related to Rotary. Just something I'm very interested in. Down at Capo Beach, we have our... The very first Capo Beach Farmers Market. That's at the Capo Beach parking lot, right behind El Patio Cafe. And I encourage everybody to be there at 3:00. We're going to do a ribbon cutting. There'll be over 40 booths there. It'll be a craft fair as well. And now that I'm on my healthy eating diet, crack for the last 13 months, I'm really looking forward to get some good organic food down there. Last item, July the 12th, we have... The Dana Point Fifth Marines Support Group is hosting our car wash at South Source Church. Information at dana pointfifthmarines.com. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, that concludes our public comments. We'll now move on to public hearings. We have item number 13, the 2014 Weed Abatement Program. Could we have a staff report, please?
Of course. This one's going to be easy. This is the final phase of our annual weed abatement process. And what you have before you is that after you conduct a public hearing, we would recommend that you adopt the attached resolution confirming the cost report and providing for the collection of the regular... on the regular tax bill. So with that, Ursula, Mark Sutton, and I would be happy to respond. Any questions the council may have?
Okay, questions, council? Okay, I will now open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council discussion and a vote.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Bro?
Aye.
Councilmember Alvera?
Aye.
Councilmember Schoffel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Bartlet?
Aye. And that item passes, five zero. We have no unfinished business items. And under new business, we have item number 14, the keeping of chickens in residential areas. Could we have a staff report, please?
Of course, Mayor Bartlet. As the council is aware, within the last several months, the issue of chickens being kept in homes for eggs and what have you has come to the surface because right now it is technically illegal to house chickens in a residence here in Dana Point. I want to start off by thanking Mrs. Wegley for coming into compliance with the code and working very collegial with staff in the council to bring this forward, to have a discussion. I really appreciate that. Her neighbor, Mr. Tomlinson, has been very helpful and also working very collegially with staff. And they've provided us with some materials that we've included in this package. What we're recommending is the council review this, provide staff with direction. But keep in mind that if you are to... If you want to pursue this, it needs to be sent down to the Planning Commission because it involves his own text amendment. And they're the appropriate legislative body to get their hands around this and then, you know, modify our zoning regulations as appropriate. So having said that, I would just take a step back and Ursula and I would like to be a resource as the council discusses this issue. So with that, Ursula and I are here, and we'd be happy to respond to questions.
Okay, questions from council members at this time? Okay, do we have any requests to speak on this item? Our first speaker is Philip Duke. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Philip Duke. I live in Capistrano Beach. I've been a resident here for 46 years. And I used to surf down here before the harbor was in and all that other stuff. When I lived here, it was the county of Orange. It wasn't a city at the time. And when I was probably 28 or 29, I had four children here. So it was really great for me, as I was raised on a ranch, actually a chicken ranch. And it was great for me to have the kids see nature and take care of the chickens and do all that other stuff. And it was great for everybody in the neighborhood. They got fresh eggs and all that. So I'm really... I really would like to see chickens back in here. It was legal in Dana Point and Capistrano Beach back when it was the county of Orange. And I don't know what happened. I guess the council or whoever at the time decided that it wasn't going to be. But I had chickens at that time, so I know that they were here at the time. So I hope that the council approves the code because I think it would be good for everybody to have six chickens and have fresh eggs. I know Laguna Niguel, Laguna Beach, Anaheim, San Ana, and San Juan have ordinances to have chickens. So everybody around us has chickens, except for us. So I think it'd be a good thing for the council to okay this and to provide us so we can have chickens. I think they make pretty good pets. They're not real noisy. As long as you keep them, you know, in a cage, I think that's mandatory that you should do that, have them in a cage, not running around free roam. And the fresh eggs, like I said, are good. And it's a... I belong to the Orchid Society, the Rare Fruit Society, and Plumeri Society. And what we use for fertilizer is chicken fertilizer. It's probably the best fertilizer there is for plants besides bat guano. That's probably the best there is. But chicken fertilizer is one of the best things for plants. So it'd be great for plants, too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Janelle Cushman, mayor, councilwoman, and staff. I am a longtime resident of Capistrano Beach, and I support a code change to allow Dana Point residents to have chickens. I believe we should have the right to own backyard chickens to supply our families with fresh eggs, which are not only healthy, but also cost-effective in this day of continued rise in the cost of living, especially when we go to the grocery store. And I think it's really good for families also. My children are grown. But I had a couple of chickens for my children in the backyard when they were young. And it was very nurturing. It was very... The children had something to, you know, enjoy nature and watch them grow and collect the eggs and that sort of thing. I just think for people who are interested in pursuing that, we should have the right to do that. I don't see any harm in it. Personally, I was really disappointed when I found out that it was not illegal. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joel McLean.
Thank you very much. My name is Joel McLean. I'm a resident of Dana Point slash Capistrano Beach, have been for 31 and a half years. I am here to urge the city council, to urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the ordinance that says that it's illegal to have chickens, backyard chickens. I have some experience with chickens myself through the Ecology Center in San Juan Capistrano. I have some experience with chickens myself through the Ecology Center in San Juan Capistrano. I've done a bit of work on their coop and their surroundings over a period of about a year and a half. And my observation is that chickens without a rooster are actually very quiet and very amiable, and they spend most of their time clucking. I think that, that the fact that this is, that this ordinance is, that having chickens in Dana Point in backyards is probably just an oversight and was adopted just in a, in a big sweep during incorporation perhaps. So I think that in the interest of being, for lack of a better word, progressive, encouraging sustainable living in our community, and because I really don't think that there is going to be an issue with neighbors in terms of noise because dogs and native bird species, I would say, make a lot more noise than half a dozen hens in a coop. So thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Christine McLean.
Good evening, Mayor Bartlet, councilmembers and staff. Just like my husband, I learned about chickens by working at the Ecology Center. I've been there for a little over four years, taking care of their hens. I've taught some classes in backyard chickens. I always inform people that the first place to look when they want to have a coop is to the City Council in their city so that they don't do something that's illegal. I've talked to all of my neighbors, just as a matter of principle, asking them if they minded having chickens if I happened to want some in my yard. Nobody has any objection. My street has got about seven signs that say, save the backyard hens. So I have an idea that at least on my street and my couple streets around me, that people would welcome the ability to have chickens. And for whatever reason, I know that I would like them because I am at the Ecology Center learning about sustainability. Joel and I have put in rain barrels, we have compost, all of those things to save runoff and save water, to grow our backyard garden. We would actually be interested in having chickens because they contribute to the health of a garden by eating the insects and by scratching the dirt and with the soil amendment or fertilizer. So I just would like to support Nancy in her effort to get the code changed because I think not only are they good for a garden, they're very good pets. And as a previous speaker said, they are great for kids to learn about nature, and they don't make any noise. There's no downside. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Wigley.
Nancy Wigley from Capistrano Beach, you've seen me before. Tonight I'm only speaking for the many people that have been supporting us over the last several months. They are totally in agreement that the code should be changed and people should be, should have the ability to have chickens if they so choose. We ask that you please support the addition that I submitted by sending it on to Planning, and hopefully the Planning will do us a nice big favor and change the code. I'd like to also point out that over the last few weeks, I have turned in over 300 signatures in support. They have been collected at the Feed Barn and by various people that just came to me and said, what can we do to help? We'd like to enjoy the same privileges that all of our neighbor cities are able to enjoy now. Thank you so much for your help.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker is John Tomlinson.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable members of the City Council, City Staff, City Manager. First of all, I wanted to thank you for hearing us at the last council meeting and going ahead and putting this chicken item on the agenda. And we look forward to helping you in every direction you want to go, to the Planning Commission, or where we need to go with this, we're willing to support you in whatever you want to do. So, thank you very much again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Our last speaker is Brad Mercer.
First of all, I wanted to thank everybody here for hearing me today, and I wanted to commend the youth for participating in their government, but most of them have left. As, as a voice of a citizen of Dana Point since 1978, a small business owner and a father of two small children, I'm here to speak about the reasoning and realities of keeping chickens in residential areas. First to clarify, keeping hens is very different from keeping roosters. Hens do not crow, cockadoodledoo. They make little to no noise. It seems obvious that we would need to have a firm limit to the number of hens. And the big question is why? Why do the people of Dana Point, or a great many of us, want to keep hens? Hens produce fresh eggs daily. There's a movement in our culture and our economy encouraging recycling, independently grown organic whole foods, window gardening, fruit trees, worm composting, and as we propose here today, hens to produce, to produce fresh whole food. Further, as a father, I want to teach my kids to be self-sufficient, to know where their foods come from, to teach them how to participate in the process. Hens are also social birds. They know their owners, they show and share affection. I've brought baby chicks to my kids' schools, Palisades and RH Dana, an overwhelmingly positive learning experience. My job as a garden designer, designer primarily in Laguna Beach and Newport Beach, featured three times in the last two years on the cover of Lux Magazine. It's my job to build window gardens, organic gardens, and chicken coops for people in communities like Emerald Bay, where the average home price is $8 million. And there's a great many people in our community that do not have to buy produce or eggs with a minimal effort. And I'm very, very familiar with the process of raising chickens. They produce minimal waste, they're non-odorous, and they don't make any noise. As many citizens of Dana Point are forward-thinking, progressive, and self-sufficient, in the interest of community, I ask you as my government to consider allowing for the culture of Dana Point, allowing for the culture that Dana Point was founded on. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments on this item. I'll now open it up to the council for deliberation and a vote. Councilmember Schoffel, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just, just a comment. First of all, I, first of all, I'd like to thank the folks who participated this evening for having such respect for the process. From the first time this, this item showed up at this council, there's been a deliberate, concerted, informative, respectful, courteous, and in fact compassionate and kind effort to get this before the council in a, in a deliberate and manner. So I, I really appreciate that. Second, I'm inclined to send this to the Planning Commission, let them do the heavy lifting on what needs to be done to harmonize everybody's interests here because, and I'd, I'd like to see that done with all deliberate speed, understanding that our Planning Commission and our planning staff is very busy these days. The last thing I'll add is, I certainly hope, if and when this passes, that the folks who keep backyard chickens have better luck than I did when I was a nine-year-old child. Brought my, proudly brought my first two home, thinking that who wouldn't get along with my four schnoodles in the backyard? Came home after school and it was chicken dinner for the dogs, and it didn't come out of a can. So I, of course, was assigned to clean it up, and that, that took a while. Having said that, I'm, I'm sure that people would be far more responsible than I was when I was nine years old. And I would, I would make the motion to send it down to the Planning Commission and would love to hear some discussion from the other council members.
Okay, more discussion from, from council members?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Bro.
Aye.
Councilmember Alvera.
Aye.
Councilmember Schoffel.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Bartlet.
Aye. And that item passes 5-0. And we'll now send this to the Planning Commission. We'll now start with our staff reports. City manager?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor Bartlet.
City attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
All right. We'll now start with council comments. Councilmember Alvera.
I have nothing, and I will turn in my meeting attendance to the city clerk.
Okay. Councilmember Bro.
Thanks, Mayor Bartlet. Just one meeting report last night, I attended the monthly American Legion meeting at the Aventura Sailing Club in the harbor. Just like to wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July this weekend, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Councilmember Schoffel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just say that, first of all, happy summer to everybody. Second, on June 20th, I awarded my Excellency's Elementary Scholarships to the winners at Palisades, RH Dana and RH Dana ENF. We have some, some extremely deserving and very high-achieving young students in this community, and it's, it's always one of my favorite days of the year. So, thank you very much, have a great summer.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes. Whoops. I turned in my meetings to the city clerk. I'll make one comment, somebody mentioned about rain barrels. It's a great opening. Rain barrels are great where it rains, but they're horrible when it, you get a little bit of water in them. They're great mosquito breeders, so please be careful and don't help breed mosquitoes because there's a lot of nasty stuff going around right now that mosquitoes are carrying. If you go to the vector control of Orange County site, there's stuff that we haven't seen in years showing up in the county, especially in the north part of the county. We're in good shape so far. But please be careful with standing water, that's not turned over like in the bottom of flower pots and things of that nature. On a more happy note, everybody have a great and safe Fourth of July. And if you have fireworks, please be safe, even though they're not allowed in Dana Point, so I suspect you'll take them somewhere else.
You can come down to our harbor and enjoy the fireworks show over the harbor.
So with that, enjoy the Fourth, enjoy your picnics or whatever you do with your family and friends, and have a good, safe Fourth of July.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. I think for the city website, if we could possibly have our link to the Veterans website for our VFW 9934, I think that would be great. A number of cities have incorporated that link on their websites, so if we could do that, that would be great and appreciated. Want to pass on something to Councilmember Schoffel. Rabbits and chickens get along great. I had occasion to be at a friend's backyard in San Juan Capistrano, and they had two rabbits and five chickens, and they were all running around the backyard, and they were just delightful and very quiet, and they got along marvelous. The rabbits were actually the ones that were really mischievous. They didn't want to go back in their cages at night. And they are hard to catch. When they don't want to be caught, you cannot catch a rabbit, even in the backyard. Let's see, summer concerts. We have handouts, we also have magnetic things that you can stick to your refrigerator. Concerts are from July 6th through August the 24th, every Sunday from, I think, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So if you want to pick these up, we have them at City Hall. We also have our community news for the summer, a lot of great activities going on in the city, so pick one of these up at City Hall as well. And, let's see, on June the 18th, I had the pleasure of attending the farewell reception to our superintendent, Dr. Farley, and he'll be moving on to bigger and better things. I also had the opportunity to attend and give welcome remarks for the Fish for Life event in Dana Point Harbor. It was a really fantastic morning where special needs children came down and we were able to get them out on a boat for an entire day of fishing. And for a lot of these kids, it was the first time they'd been on a boat and certainly the first time they'd been fishing, so it was really nice to roll out the red carpet and have them come aboard at Dana Wharf Sport Fishing. Let's see, I attended the strand development guest reception, and they had about 250 people from mainly San Gabriel Valley to all, all through the inland empire as well. There's a lot of interest now in our strands development, and they had a welcome reception, and people came on buses from, from various areas, so I think we're going to sell out those final 42 lots probably in fairly short fashion. I attended the Dana Hills High School graduation ceremony on, on June the 24th, and it was an amazing ceremony. Over 700 students graduated from Dana Hills High School. 107 valedictorians, amazing. I sat next to one of the graduates who was a valedictorian, his name is Aaron Si, and he's going to be going on to UC Berkeley and majoring in something that I can't even pronounce, but he's absolutely brilliant. And I think he graduated a 4.7 grade point average. Just, we've got some really superior students graduating from our Dana Hills High School, so we're very proud of all their accomplishments. On June the 25th, I attended the St. Regis reception for the new ownership at the St. Regis Hotel. I think they're going to be doing some marvelous things to even further upgrade our five-star, five-diamond resort. And then June 27th, I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition Transportation Update for South Orange County, which just confirmed what we already knew, we're in gridlock and we need to have some traffic relief put in place. So we're working on a lot of different things to widen the streets, Ortega Interchange is getting widened. We're going to look at the Tesoro Extension and how we can proceed with that project and get the community involved. So a lot of good things happening in South Orange County to try to get people moving on the roads and freeways. July 4th is our spectacular fireworks show in Dana Point over the harbor, so please come and join us. I think it starts at 9:00. We also have that linked in for music to, I think it's KSBR, is that correct? Where they'll have music linked in with our fireworks show. And we will take a nice summer break until September 16th, which will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we hope everyone has a very, have a very nice, safe, and fun-filled summer. I'd like to adjourn the City Council meeting tonight in memory of firefighter Mike Hurdman, who was a Dana Point resident. So on behalf of the Dana Point City Council and the city of Dana Point, our thoughts and prayers are with his wife, daughter, and family for firefighter Mike Hurdman, who was from our community of Dana Point. We want to thank the 375 family members, friends, and volunteers who searched for weeks to try to find his, his body. And at this very difficult time of loss, you know, we just want to come together as a community and support the Hurdman family. So with that, we stand adjourned to September the 16th. Thank you.